Okay, at being a little past seven, I'll call to order the Board of Selectmen meeting of Monday, September 26, 2016. And we open our meetings by reciting the Pledge of Allegiance for a couple of reasons, primarily to recognize and remember our vets, particularly those who are currently serving in the armed forces, and those who gave their last full measure of devotion in service. We do recognize that not everyone may agree that the pledge is an appropriate recognition of the flag, and we understand that the flag represents freedom of expression, so anyone who feels they would like to participate in their own way, as their conscience dictates, is free to do so, or not participate at all if they think that's appropriate. The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, first item on the agenda is the chairman's update. Judge Leela Kern of the Superior Court ruled in favor of the town in the lawsuit challenging the town's decision, town meeting's vote, to grant funds to two churches in town, the Acton Center Congregational Church and the South Acton Congregational Church, for preservation of their historic buildings. She pretty much agreed completely with the town's legal arguments about why those grants are appropriate under the Community Preservation Act and the state constitution. The plaintiffs have 30 days to appeal that decision, so we'll wait and see what happens from here. Let's see, the town received a grant of $400,000 from the state for its Complete Streets program to implement a system of, to the goals that are contained in the Complete Streets program, and kudos to Core York and the Engineering Department for putting together a community forum to come up with goals to implement better ways for people to move about town other than in cars. And you will be seeing in the future more bike paths, more pedestrian-friendly ways of getting about town as alternatives to automobiles. Last week, we had a employee's picnic and recognized all of our great employees in town for all the good work they do at Narrow Park. It was a great event. And we continue to recognize all the work that the volunteers in town do. We're going to plan a reception in the spring for all the volunteers who work on various committees and boards throughout town. We encourage people, if you haven't, to get involved in town government, helping to plan the future of the town. We particularly need people for the planning board now that deals with housing subdivisions, and if you have an interest in how the town is going to be developed out in the future, we ask you to consider serving on the planning board. I think that probably completes my chairman's update. Mr. Assistant Town Manager, do you have anything to add?
I do, sir. Last week, Steve, Lisa, and I, along with about 40 other staff, attended a training event called Alice. It was held by the Acton Police. It was an active shooter incident training event, and it was an excellent program. And we're actually going to make it a mandatory training for all employees, and also create an evening seminar for volunteers, committees, and boards to attend. So that's, there'll more to come on that. The warrant for the special town meeting is on the website, and that will be in the post office, going out for delivery tomorrow and/or Wednesday. And then, starting Wednesday, the Highway Department is going to be starting a milling and paving project on Main Street going from Kelly's Corner down to the Manor Town Line. So that's, that's a three to four-week project. That's all.
Okay, thank you. We hear citizens' concerns at the beginning of the meeting. For any issues that members of the audience might want to raise that aren't on the agenda tonight, are there any citizens' concerns? Okay. All right, it being 7:10, I have a notice of hearing. Notice is hereby given under Chapter 138 of the General Laws, that the Board of Selectmen will hold a hearing in the Francis Faulkner Room in the Acton Town Hall on September 26, 2016, at 7:10 p.m. on the application of Guacamole Incorporated for a change in manager from Francisco Preciado to Alejandro Brambilla for an all-alcohol license as a common victular at 5 Nagog Park in Acton. The application is on file, and the selectmen's office may be viewed during normal working Can you make sure the microphone is turned on, because we're on TV and they can't pick up your voices without that? And please introduce yourself. Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman Perry and members of the Board of Selectmen. My name is Attorney Nicholas Felici. I represent the applicant Guacamole Incorporated in regards to its application for a change of manager. As you probably are aware, it's a family-owned Mexican restaurant that has been with us enacted for several years now, and at this point in time, they were looking to change the manager from Mr. Preciado to my client Alex Brambilla, who's in front of you this evening. It's a, like I said, it's a family-owned restaurant, and his cousins are the owners of the restaurant. And at this point in time, with his career spanning the last 10 years in the restaurant business for sister restaurants in the area, particularly in Groton, at another Extopa Cantina location there, he now wants to pursue his managerial duties at the Acton Restaurant. And I think that you'll see that his, his experience is, is well-founded here in the restaurant business, and that he will serve the Acton community very well by being its new full-time manager. He's been an assistant manager at that restaurant here on Nagog Park for the last eight or nine months, and the, the family is very confident that Alex will continue to do good work as a manager if this board is willing to approve him.
Questions? Janet?
I was going to move. Should I? Does anybody, I, I can move, and somebody can second, and then we can have discussion.
Okay.
I'll move to approve the application of Guacamole, Inc., for a change of manager from Francisco Preciado to Alejandro Brambilla for an all-alcohol license as a common victular at 5, anyhow, anyhow, change of manager. I don't know what this part is, anyhow. Second.
Is there any further discussion? Let me just ask you about your tips policy and your, what training you do for employees regarding serving alcohol?
Certainly. Before anybody is hired by Guacamole, they have to be fully tip-certified. Mr. Brambilla has been tip-certified in the past and has been renewed again recently through 2018. And that's a, that's a 100% no, no exceptions policy. Everybody before they ever put on a waiter's bib or anything has to be fully tip-certified. That's been a, a policy from day one. And Mr. Brambilla intends to continue that policy as the manager.
Okay, thank you. I just, this is just a question for, for me, I guess. I see a Corey certification in here. The chief doesn't, you don't ask the chief to give us a memo about whether he has any issues. I'm assuming if he had an issue, you would hear about it and include it in here. Okay, so we can just assume the chief is okay with this application. Thank you. I don't have any further questions. Franny?
I just occasionally, when, when we have had over-serving discussions, we, it's come up what restaurants do when someone looks like, they weren't drunk before their last drink, but now, when they're leaving, they look a little tipsy. And I wanted to encourage you to take advantage of the police's offer to come assist someone home or, or check out the situation. Better to call if in doubt than not.
Words, good words, Saliba.
Okay, no further comments. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Notice of hearing. Notice is hereby given under Chapter 138 of the General Laws, that the Board of Selectmen will hold a hearing in the Francis Faulkner Room in Acton Town Hall on September 26, 2016, at 7:15 p.m. on the application of Not Your Average Joes, Inc., change in manager to Brian LeBlu, manager, for an all-alcohol license as a common victular at 305 Main Street in Acton. Not Your Average Joes.
Good evening. I'm Brian LeBlu. I'm the current general manager, Not Your Average Joes.
Are there any questions from any board members about this application? My only question was, if you're the current general manager, and you've been serving there since, in that position since last fall, is that different than the manager position?
I've currently been the GM for over four months now.
Okay.
Yep. I'm sorry, I don't understand the question.
Is that the same position that you're asking us to approve you, to be the new manager?
It's a change in manager on the liquor license. The old GM has been removed from the company, and I'm taking over his place.
Okay. Somebody want to make a motion?
I move to approve the application for a change of manager at Not Your Average Joes to Brian LeBe, LeBlu. It's a hard one to say. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, sir. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, the town clerk update on early voting.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For the first time in Massachusetts, for the presidential election, registered voters in Massachusetts will be able to cast their ballots before Election Day. Early voting is open to all voters to make it more convenient to participate in the presidential election scheduled for November 8. Early voting will start Monday, October 24, 2016, through Friday, November 4, 2016. Registered voters in Acton can come to Town Hall during the hour set forth in the board's packet to cast their ballot. However, once the voter has cast an early voter ballot, they no longer can attend the Election Day to vote. The times of early voting will be published in all local papers, as well as the town website. I will have flyers available to advertise the date and times of early voting at the senior center, both libraries, and any other spaces that need to be advertised. And I've spoken with the League of Woman Voters, and they're in support of everything I've put forward, and willing to assist us in anything that we need. That's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Okay, any questions from board members? Katie?
Thank you, Eva. And I know this has been a lot of work for town clerks to, to figure out how to implement the law, so thank you for coming up with this. Are all of these, will, all of these times be staffed by staff in your office, or are you using volunteers for some of it, like you do for Election Day?
They will be our election workers, just as, as if they were staffing an election.
Okay. And then, I've heard some people, some sort of concerns with the early voting, having to kind of spend that weekend before the election, making sure their rolls add up so people can't come and vote on Election Day. So have you, I mean, do you have any concerns about that, or you just, that's your plan for Monday, the 7th, or whatever it is?
Well, anybody that comes into early vote in those timeframes, they will be marked as early voters on the voting list, so Election Day, they cannot come in. If they do, they'll be told they can't vote.
Right, right. Okay.
And a notice will be posted during the early voting hours, and that anybody that comes into early vote will be told that they are not allowed to come in and vote on Election Day.
Okay. Yeah, maybe it was towns that had some electronic system or something. It seemed like they had concerns about making sure it was all up to date about who had voted or not. So I guess it's sometimes easier when you're on paper. Okay, well, thank you very much for, for coming and explaining to us, and hopefully this will help more people be able to get to the polls.
Thank you.
So you can't vote early and often, right?
No, you can vote early, but not often.
Yeah, I was wondering, when people vote early, what do you do with the ballots? Do you have the machine there that they can insert it in? I, I don't know if people are going to be concerned that, well, of course, if you have a stack of ballots, it probably doesn't matter after a while, who says who?
We'll actually have ballot bags that, that are locked with a numbered seal. Anybody that comes in, they will have a ballot put in an envelope, as if they were absentee voting, on the same idea. Those ballots will be counted on Election Day at the polls, not earlier. So they will be stored in a locked bag at that point.
Okay. Well, I actually, I had to read up on early voting, because I, you know, I'd heard about it, but I didn't really know how it worked. And then I saw your, the notice in our packet, and I, I sent it to my husband, because it's often, because he works during the day, so sometimes it's hard for him, and he might take advantage of this. I noticed he printed it out, and he had it with his stuff, so, thank you.
Certainly, thank you.
Franny?
When we talked about this at Commission on Disability, because Ann Chang came in, from the League of Woman Voters, came and told us about it, it was suggested that we see if we can have transportation to the polls available to somebody who could only vote on the weekends. Afterwards, I was talking to Ann Chang, we were thinking, well, there are a lot of days to try to work it out. But I wondered if maybe this being the first year, and only being one day that's on a weekend, whether we could maybe put something in there, like if you have trans, a need for transportation on the Saturday, October 29th, please contact us. And then, we could deal with it if it comes. I mean, I suppose we could probably find volunteers. I can't imagine we'd be inundated. And I don't think it's worthwhile hiring transaction to run a van, because you wouldn't know when it was going to be, and it would have to be for all day. But I wondered if we could maybe sort of say that, I mean, or at least mention that on the regular days, the usual Acton transportation services are available, and if they can only go on Saturday, please let us know if you're having, having transportation trouble. And then we can sort of gauge it, see if it's one person or 20.
Sure, absolutely. We can do that. We can add that little quote in, within the ad that we're going to put in.
Okay. And I can talk to you about the details.
Sure.
Or, or Doug Halli can.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
This is kind of off that topic, but, you know, with, with the discussion about interference in the election, I'm just wondering, we put those ballots in those boxes, that, how long do the ballots stay in there, and what happens to them after, after the election? Do you?
They have to be retained. They're, they're stored in record retention. They're sealed with, with our signatures and seals on all of them after the election, before we actually have to organize them as we do the absentee ballots, so they can be brought to the polls to count.
Okay, so then you dispose of them after 20 years, or something like that? Or is there a deadline for, you have to keep them forever?
20 months.
20 months?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And so, any online stuff we have is pretty much public information already, isn't it? Rolls of voters and that kind of stuff? Anything that's in the computer is already?
Yes. After, after that specific election, yes, they would be public record. Before the election, we can print a list of who's applied for absentee ballots, but as far as anyone that comes in the day of, or even during early voting and wanting to know whether somebody voted, they can absolutely contact the office after election. It's public record at that point.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
The Acton Nursing Services Task Force final report, which we have a copy of in our packet, and is online as part of the selectmen's agenda. Works. Which button? Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for having us. I'll start by introducing the Acton Nursing Services Task Force. We are all here but one couldn't make it. We have Howard Sussman, Adrian Hancock, Florence Ross, March Kennedy, and Heather York is with us as well. Ellen Feinstein could not make it, and I'm Charlie Kudlek. And also, we like to recognize the able help of Katie Green, who was yearly is on to us and very helpful. I'll make this rather brief. We have some slides for the benefit of people who might be watching now or later, so have some idea what we're talking about. But as it says on the bottom, the full report is available on the town website, and will be, I'm sure, in other DocuShare places. If you look for the final report of the Acton Nursing Services Task Force, you'll probably find it. If not, ask Mark. Very briefly, as background, Acton Nursing Services was formed by the, I mean, Acton Nursing Services Task Force was formed by the Board of Selectmen in February of 2015, following the special town meeting of previous fall, where much discussion about the future of the Acton Nursing Services was held. The Board of Selectmen formed some objectives, and I don't read slides, so you have to do your own reading, and goals, which the task force spent the remaining time working with. The last goal is a recommendation The last goal is a recommendation for what we, the Task Force, things should happen next. I'll come to that at the end of this report. Before we get into the specifics, there are a couple of things worth mentioning. We learned quite a bit. We learned that there are certain things that are pretty well impossible for an outside board to do, which have to do with information which is covered by the privacy laws. We started out somewhat naively, I guess, hindsight, thinking we could do a lot of analysis of, you know, how much each of its cost and how it could be changed and all this. But to do that, you have to have access to people's records, and that's just not doable. So that part of the goals and objectives did not quite happen the way we planned. Nevertheless, we still learned a lot about how things work, and a lot of it is covered in great detail in the report, which you all have. It is my understanding there's something going on at 9:00 tonight, so I'm not going to make this very long. Anyway, we also worked through this time period where the nursing service went from being an enterprise fund to being part of the municipal budget, which has now been implemented. And we learned a few things about that. I'll mention them later. The last overall quick point is that with all the work that was done primarily to increase the awareness of the Acton Nursing Services in Acton, there is still a considerable amount of lack of awareness that the Acton Nursing Services exists and what it does, of its high rating and so on. So there's plenty of reason to continue that effort, which probably is essentially ongoing because people change, new groups come in. Now, very quickly, to just mention the goals as they are in the report. The first one was a network development plan, which is, as described in some detail, really sort of a business plan describing of what should be done, how it should be done, and I won't get into the details again. But the only part of that that we really had any success in working with is the increasing the awareness of Acton Nursing Services. That's a sort of underlying theme for just about everything that was done by, in this case, communicating directly with the organizations and people who refer patients, in this case to Acton Nursing Services, physicians and so on. That's a very important part of the process, because that's where the patients come from, who then dictate what happens next. Most of the time, most of the work, most of the success has been in communicating to the citizens in various ways that Acton has this almost unique service called Acton Nursing Services, which all of you here know what it's about, highly rated. Anybody who's used it is usually more than happy to provide testimonials. To expand just a little bit on that, the major problem, I think it's fair to sum it up this way, is that most people don't think about who they would use for their home services because they don't think they, it's not the current problem. It comes up once someone has had some medical procedure, or surgery, or chronic disease or whatever, and usually the recommendation for the home care comes from their physician, but the actual implementation may be someone, if it's a hospital, someone from the discharge people or whatever, who may have their own nursing service associated with a hospital or in some cases even with a physician. So few people give it much thought. But those who, for one reason or another, have gone through it, and especially those who have used Acton Nursing Services, become promoters of Acton Nursing Services, because it is different. There are differences between the kind of care one gets from different organizations, and the Acton Nursing Service is very highly regarded, and that's something that people may want to think about, because it's not just them, it's their families and friends even who might need the service. So it's worthwhile to give it some thought, and that's been pretty much our purpose. The report lists in considerable detail all of the activities that were done, from publishing the very factual and very carefully checked-for-accuracy questions and answers publication on the Town website, to the mailing of the postcards that were done earlier this year, their posters in town. The audiences for these things were another project of the Task Force, is to identify who best to address marketing efforts to. Not surprisingly, most of the people using home care services are older. This is true nationally and of course as well in Acton. And that's who the postcards went to. And in the process of, well, I skipped a part, but I'll leave it up there for now. In the process of defining this audience, you know, we found that the Acton population, 60 and older, is increasing. Going back to this, which I sort of quickly skipped on, one of the things that we pretty well established with the Acton Finance Department, as far as with Heather York, who is here, Director of the Acton Nursing Services, is that one of these, even though we cannot look at individual patient cases in any detail, the overall number of admissions is a worthwhile number to keep track of, because it relates to basically how much of the overhead gets covered and so on. So here is, here are some numbers going back to 2009. This is what it looks like as a bar graph. It dropped pretty sharply from 13 to 14, and now it's began to, it being the total number of admissions for the year, has begun to come back up. Whether that is related to the efforts of the Task Force or the Nursing Service or just happens, again, it's difficult to pin down precisely, because we cannot interview people to ask them, why did you pick Acton Nursing Services? For, in order to do that, we would have to know who they are. We cannot ask that, because that's, the privacy laws kick in. So these are some of the roadblocks that we ran into. But as, for whatever reason, the number of admissions is increasing again, and that's a good thing. But as we looked at that, in our discussions, it was, came up that the number of admissions is sort of a small number, but what really happens with the Acton Nursing Service is the number of visits, which you see the numbers up there, actually averages about 10 a day. That's the amount of interaction that the Acton Nursing Service has with mostly, not 100%, but mostly citizens of Acton. And the kinds of services depend, of course, entirely on the medical cases, so there's no significance to the year-to-year variations. And if you like graphs, this is what it looks like as bar graphs. As you can see, it's mostly the, sorry for the small type, it's always hard to put all the information on one slide, but the ones on the left are skilled nursing, then physical therapy, occupational therapy, and home health aid, and the totals. So you can see that skilled nursing went up considerably last fiscal year, just happened that way. And overall, the total number of visits, going back a slide, increased to 4,300 for the year. I think that's a significant piece of information to give people an idea of the amount of activity that actually takes place with the Acton Nursing Services. So I said we'll make this quick, so we'll jump ahead to the next thing, which is, I started talking about it, the number of people who are potential patients. And the measure we have is from the Town Clerk's Office, the number of residents by age. We actually compiled this information when we were doing the postcard mailings, deciding who to best mail it to. And as you can see, the number of Acton residents, 60 and older, is increasing, and it's quite consistent with the, some of the analysis that Peter Ashton did several years ago for the Senior Center. These projections are holding up at least so far. So his projection was that by 2015, or, I'm sorry, 2020, it would be like 25% or maybe higher. I think it'll be, you could easily get there. So the combination of home care being basically, most of the people needing home care being 60 and above, and the Acton 60 and above population growing faster than it used to, indicates that the need for nursing services is not going to diminish, at least not in the immediate future. I have a slide that gives credits to the organization called Friends of Acton Nursing Services, FANS. Florence Ross is here, who is both a member of the Task Force and a President of FANS. FANS does a great job and has for years of supporting the Acton Nursing Services. So here is their name, post office box. They take cash, checks, credit cards, I don't know, now I'm teasing. But seriously, it's an extremely important part of the whole process, and I'm sure the Nursing Services appreciates it. Our recommendation, which is the end of this report, which was part of the original task for us to do, would be to, for the Board of Selectmen, to appoint a permanent standing committee to support the Acton Nursing Services with the description perhaps of what this committee should do, being based, at least in part, on our experience, in other words, not to expect such a committee to have access to the private information that I already mentioned twice. But still, there is plenty of work and plenty of ongoing effort to make this organization better known and better used by the citizens of Acton. So in a simple one sentence, that is the recommendation of the Task Force. And with that, our job is completed, and upon your acceptance of this report, we will disband. And I'll just leave that on the screen for people who may want to look up the Nursing Service directly, although it's also very easy to find on the Town Website. Thank you very much. Of course, we'd be happy to answer your questions. Chin Sung, you have any questions?
No, I don't.
Okay. Janet?
Well, Charlie and Task Force, thank you very much for all of your work, and I certainly, I had to sort of smile when I read the first part where you said, well, we ran into this obstacle about privacy of medical records, which kind of, yeah, kind of hindered what your great ambitions. And, yeah, I think that's unfortunate. I assume that if we wanted to get into it more deeply, I assume we could get a consultant who would be sworn to keep all of that secret and could delve in more deeply. Or we could ask Heather to do all the analysis, you know, in her free time. I had a couple of questions. Admissions, is that admissions to hospitals, or is that admissions to the A and S, you know, to the A and S program, when you talk about admissions?
To A and S.
Okay, okay. That's because I was trying to figure out, okay, why, you know, the trend, why would this be? Because I know that there was, probably a few years ago, there was talk of admissions, and sort of, I think the idea was that if you didn't, well, if you didn't have readmissions, then that was a sort of a good sign, and I just wanted to make sure I had it straight. And then home visits, those, I gather, every one of those, physical therapy and the skilled nursing and whatever the other visits are for, those are all discrete specialties, so each, there's a separate person for each one of those things. It's not as if one person can do all of those things in one fell swoop in one visit.
I will say, yes, and Heather's here to correct me, and yes, it's not the same one person, it's there. For example, there was a brief period of time earlier this year in the spring where the physical therapist retired and some time before we could get another one, so, you know, physical therapy is done only by physical therapists. Heather, jump in, she's nodding this way.
She's, the universal symbol, right?
They're distinct specialties.
All right. I, obviously, you know where I've been in the past on A and S, and I still, I have some questions, which I think probably I'm going to save for the finance, finance department or whatever they do, presentation of budgets or something like that. But, no, I do appreciate what you're doing. It sounds as if the key is to get the hospitals, the doctors, to feature the nursing service at the top, because as you said, it's not necessarily, unless we have a whole lot of people in Acton who have used A and S and are really pushing for it, are you really going to rely on the hospitals to have A and S on the list and really feel strongly enough to support it? And I know that we have some competition, right? I mean, with Emerson being the one notable hospital in the area, and I guess they have their own competing service, and sort of maybe a bias in favor of that, so. So that, but that's, you know, it's helpful to know where the potential pitfalls are and also the things that you can focus on. So, thank you. are, and also the things that you can focus on, so, thank you.
By the way, if I may, just back to the admissions questions, that's the terminology that's used in the business for admissions to the home care service, so it's, to repeat it for emphasis on this, it's the admissions by Acton Nursing Services of new patients now. A new patient could have, you know, a couple of weeks of home care, or months and months, depends, but the number of admissions is the first event that occurs.
Well, that's those medical people, you know, I remember when a doctor was writing saying, unremarkable, unremarkable, and he turned to me, don't be insulted, this is good, that you're, you're, nothing remarkable about you from a medical standpoint. I said, that's fine, thank you very much, you know, decoding for me, so, thank you.
Katie, you have questions?
I don't have any questions, because I sort of followed along for the last 18 months, but just wanted to, to thank the Task Force, and having been able to have a bit of a front seat to this, they've done yeoman's work, and it's very much appreciated. As is noted in the report, the nursing service is, is small, you know, Heather and her team are, are focused on what they should be focused on, on the patient care, and so it's been helpful to have the support of the Task Force to create a lot of the materials that you see in here, and in the packet that they gave us, and to sort of get those out and around town and in other places. You know, one of the, the things, Janet, that, that they're working on is referral, or letters to, to doctors and others that make referrals to the nursing service to kind of increase their awareness about it, because, you're right, that's sort of the main way people, people get there. As Charlie pointed out, you don't want to, most people aren't thinking about what home care they're going to use until they realize they need home care in the first place. And so, making sure that the nursing service is in the back of their head and in the front of the minds of, of potential referring sources is really important. So, very much appreciative of all the work you've done, and hopefully after this, we can discuss setting up a permanent task force or, or actual committee as, as recommended, because I think there's still value in the work that they're doing, and would make sense to keep that going. So, thank you all.
Thank you, Katie, you've been a big help.
Franny.
I just wanted to second the thanks and the appreciation for everything.
Okay, my question would have to do with gathering information. It would seem to me there'd be a way to do it without violating HIPAA going forward. I mean, you could have on the intake sheet that leads to an admission, a question like, how did you hear about Acton Nursing Services? And input that into a separate database that wouldn't have any patient identification information attached to it. So, at le, did, did your committee consider that, or is that possible going forward, that this information need could be connected, or collected without violating HIPAA?
My best answer to you tonight, without opening up a long discussion, is we've discussed it, and I think there's probably more to be looked into, but the simple answer to such proposal has been, no, you can't, because Heather can again correct me if I'm going the wrong way, but there's so, relatively few people in nursing services of this size, and we're not the only ones that have this problem, that it's relatively easy to identify the person, even though if you're not given their name, number, and so on, there are only so many people who have their left hip replaced in August, you know, so to avoid potential violations of the law, which I guess is fairly strict, you, you're a lawyer, I'm not, the, you know, the, the tendency is to say, well, let's not try it, but that does not mean that some further look, perhaps, by people who know more about it than I do, we do, could lead to it, but it's definitely been an issue.
Okay, well, thank you very much, and the question is whether we would put together a standing committee. I mean, I don't think we need a vote tonight on that, we'll just get a sense of the board, and Katie, who's the liaison to A and S, if the board agrees, we'll put together a charge, and we'll move forward with establishing the committee. Does that make sense? Okay, I'm seeing affirmative, affirmative support from all the board members, so we'll, we'll follow through with that.
If I may just make a quick request, if you would perhaps indicate that you accept this report, we would consider our job done.
I think let's have a formal vote to accept the report. So I'll make a motion to accept the final report from the Acton Nursing Services Task Force.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? The motion carries unanimously.
So as Charlie pointed out with that, under the sort of extension we gave them, the Task Force is officially dissolved, but I will work on a, on a charge for a future, future committee. Thanks, Charlie, and thank you, everybody.
Item five on the agenda, Board to discuss comments on comprehensive 40B permit 31-39-45 Martin Street. We'll probably ask Mr. Gallagher, the developer, to proceed first, and give us what your plans are.
Yeah, I'm going to go over there. Can I borrow your easel?
Sure. and make sure you introduce yourself. Thank you. Oh, okay, we have a microphone available, you can, you can be.
Good evening, my name is Mark Gallagher, I'm from Seal Harbor Development. We propose on Martin Street to build a 40B project. The project would have 32 homes on it, a mixture of single-family and duplex condominium units. For those of you that didn't come on the sidewalk, Martin Street is down this way, it's 39 through 45 Martin Street. There are three existing properties now. Zavalas is on this far end, if you know the property at all, it's a large farm that sits in back here. This is the existing driveway. The existing driveway would be used for the road to gain access to the property. We have our homes set up in clusters or villages. There are 32 in all. There are three existing homes on the property. All three of the homes would be moved to the front of the property and have a more distinct position on Martin Street. The only one in question is whether the third house on the upper left-hand side can be moved. We've had a structural engineer look at it, and it's not in very good shape. They've said because of the vibrations from the railroad over, you know, all the years, that it has caused the house to, to be in poor structural shape. Of this, there would be eight homes that would be provided for lower martyr income families in Acton or coming into Acton, and there would be 24 market rate homes. Really simple synopsis.
Okay, there are questions from board members. Katie.
So can you speak first about the three historic homes? So you mentioned that there's one, that there's a question about the structural stability of it. Have you thought about keeping it where it is, and, you know, shoring it up and making it one of the homes, instead of trying to move it and not being able to do that?
Sure. We've looked at a lot of studies, you know, when we were in front of the Design Review Board a few weeks ago, they asked a similar question. The house, what's happened, has happened to many, you know, homes in Acton, through the years, there've been a lot of alterations to the house, and it's really the alterations to the house that are not in good shape. That specific building has a lot of water damage to it, it's got mold inside, it's just got a lot of problems in terms of its, not only its stability, but its ability to, to be rehabbed successfully for a reasonable, you know, price point. So that's the only one that we're concerned about. The other two homes, we've mapped architecturally, and they're in good shape. Again, you know, not the, the original homesteads have been added to throughout the years, there's apartments, there's, you know, all different types of, of additions to it. Zavalas' home, which is the furthest one down here, has a barn, and that would be moved as well.
And what, the barn would go with the house, or doing something else with the barn?
Exactly, the barn goes with the house, and sits up in front, right on, right on Martin Street itself.
Okay. And the Acton, I believe, at least a couple members of the Acton Historic Commission were on the sidewalk, typically with historic buildings, they also do kind of a walk-through of the buildings themselves, and I'm wondering if you're willing to kind of schedule that with them, so that they could weigh in as well, because that's generally what their comments are, are related to.
They're welcome to make an appointment with us to, to go through the homes, I mean, it's up to the families, we, we've had a lot of traffic going in and out of the homes, we've, you know, we've had the state in there.
Right.
They just finished the three-week study of the, of the homes for the purpose of, you know, the state's appraisal, but we can ask.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
And is that the only barn, the one that you mentioned? I thought there were a couple other barns.
Well, there's not really a barn out behind the, the middle house. There's an addition on the back of it that looks like it's an apartment, and then behind it, there's a garage-type structure. I, I don't know that I would, you know, consider it a barn as much as I did, you know, the one on Zavalas' property.
Okay. And then, there've been comments to us about the concerns with flooding in the neighborhood, can you talk about your stormwater management plans?
Cannot. This is an MFHA permit, so we've not even begun the majority of it. We have Oxbow going out in about four or five days to locate the riverfront, and then we can file with the Conservation Commission for determinations of where the wetlands are along the riverfront. And at that point, once we know where they, they locate the flood plain and where they locate the, the wetlands, we then can go in and do subsurface testing for, for our, for all of our stormwater maintenance. But we're pulling the water away from the neighborhood with our stormwater maintenance. There's a stormwater maintenance area here, and there's a second one way out beyond everywhere else. So we're pulling all the water that we can away from the neighborhood that's already there.
Okay. And then there's, I was informed and saw some pictures of, there's a portion of the sidewalk nearby, that's a historic stone sidewalk, and I think potentially the only remaining one in town, so I don't know if you had, if part of this, often we ask for sidewalks or donations to sidewalk funds, have you built in any plans to do sidewalks in here, and if so, would you, or, you know, just be aware of and keep the sort of historic stone sidewalk?
The only, this is the first I've heard about there being any historic, I don't believe there's any sidewalk on our side of the street.
Right.
It may be adjacent or across the street. The only thing that we've been asked to do would be to help out with the rejuvenation of the field that's across the street. And when we were in front of staff, they spoke about different designs they're looking at to rejuvenate Jones Field.
Right.
And they asked if we would participate, and when they, when they get a, a plan, we said we'd be happy to look at that.
Okay. And then you mentioned going before the Design Review Board, I'd also seen some comments about the choice of sort of siding for the houses, have you talked to them about what that will be, or taken their comments under consideration?
We had a discussion, a brief discussion with the Design Review Board. Again, because we're an MFHA and not a LIP.
Yep.
All of that work will be done after we get our site approval letter, which we're told, you know, if it's going to be issued, it's going to be around October 15. Then we have about a month between then and the time that we've targeted to file with the ZBA.
Right.
So that would be the time that we agreed we would come back, but trying to remember that there are several elements in, in an affordable housing project. There was a discussion, somebody was at the Design Review Board, might have been the Acton Community Housing, when we met with Nancy last time, that there was somebody there that was talking about a project in Boston, where instead of using vinyl siding, they had gone to either Cedar Clabwoods or Hardy, Hardy Plank. I'm not sure that this, this neighborhood is, is envisioned to be at that level.
Okay. Okay, those are my questions for now, and I'll reserve comments for later.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, could you just explain envisioned to be at that level? Is that a cost thing, or?
Yeah, Hardy, Hardy, you know, Hardy Plank is, is probably three times the cost of vinyl siding. There are other elements, you know, in terms of affordability, and Nancy can probably address this better than I can, but long-term maintenance of each of the buildings is, is also considered. If you've got to repaint the house every three to five years, it gets to be a fairly expensive adventure.
Okay, and before we get to other questions, let me just ask Mark, I mean, there's, there's nobody here from the Planning Board today, I don't think, is there? Yeah, so we got to put comments together, so.
Usually the Board of Superman actually, Janet usually offers to do it, but one of the members of the board is like, writes the letter.
Okay, and you just do it off the minutes or notes you're taking, is that?
We kind of get a sense.
I also have some templates from prior comments, but, yeah, but I, that's why I take notes, and I kind of fit stuff together.
Okay, Jin Sung, do you have any, anything to say, ask, questions?
No, Katie covered my one main question, which was the stormwater and flooding management.
Yeah, actually, Katie, you covered a lot of questions. I, I'm really glad and appreciative of having eight more affordable units, but I'm, there's some things that I'm sort of disappointed about. I don't know much about building a whole neighborhood, but it feels very much like squeeze in as much as we can, and so it sort of feels to me like maximizing profit to the expense of the quality of life of the people that live there. I'm coming off of a weekend where I celebrated 20 years since we moved into a cohousing neighborhood in town, and it occurred to me, I don't know why we haven't been telling builders like you more about it as we have gone along, because I keep seeing neighborhoods go in that could really benefit from that sort of pedestrian-oriented neighborhood. The houses aren't like quite so, this isn't by design of cohousing, but this is another thing, the way they're right next to each other, facing each other, you said they would be about 15 feet apart, but they're right like this, rather than askew, you know, when they're in a little circle, they could be more askew to give people a little bit more privacy. And there could be some, as I said, more pedestrian space with parking on the side, and there could be a common space, even outdoors, or a common house as we have, or something. I also am disappointed that the group homes didn't go in. True that they couldn't be counted as affordable, but that doesn't mean that it wouldn't be a good thing to put group homes in, and it's a great place to have the group homes, because it's near the train for both employees and the people who live there. So, so I'm sort of disappointed, you know, just to see it like that. Also, you know, in the same way, the, the siding, you know, that it, there's a certain type of house that I've seen in certain developments that are, I think you mentioned it, maybe cedar, you know, they're, they're stained, they're not painted, which I think probably makes a little bit less maintenance, it's not as much maintenance as paint, but it's not as sort of modern-looking as, I don't know, I didn't want to say, I didn't want to give an adjective for the vinyl siding, but I just think, I would love if you would sort of go the extra mile. I also wonder about the fire department, we didn't, I didn't see fire department comments, I don't think, but.
Yeah, we went, we went with staff a second time.
Okay, because.
About three weeks ago.
I thought usually they'd want a, a circle so that you, they don't have a dead end.
We had a circle originally.
Yeah.
In probably like our third or fourth iteration of the plan, and they actually went over this in detail at the last staff meeting, and found that it was more in tune than having a cul-de-sac per se, or, or a drive-thru.
Huh.
So we, we did, we've been in front of staff twice now, once in January, early February, and once about three or four weeks ago, right before we went to design. once about three or four weeks ago, right before we went to Design Review.
And I don't want to, you know, discourage, you know, growth. I mean, I sometimes do in certain places.
I understand.
But just some of these things, also the massing that the Design Review Board talked about, I would love if you would get the input from our, one of our architects, Peter Quinn, who happens to live in Acton. And he was really careful when he built Half Moon Hill. It was, you know, he really tried to think about the size of the houses and how they massed into the hill. It would be great to get input about that.
As you know, we haven't done our architectural yet.
Okay.
But we have promised and we will follow through with the neighborhood to try to make it, or to try to blend them. I spoke with the architect this morning, knowing that we were coming here this evening. She's chomping at the bit to come down and meet with the neighborhood and talk to them. We build smaller houses than the majority of the other...
Yes, I'm very happy to see that they're smaller.
So, you know, to speak, I mean, I think Half Moon Hill is an anomaly and I say that because it's a different model. Each property has its own assets and liabilities. Obviously with this being close to a 12-acre site, you know, if you even cycle out the wetlands where our density is at the average. It's not at the high end of the average, it's not at the low end of the average, it's literally average. If you cycle in the 12 acres, you know, we're at the very low end of the average. So there's a certain economic feasibility to it and we've gotten kind of good over the years of figuring that number up. And we've gone up and down, just so you know. I mean, our first strike at this was significantly higher because we had an apartment-type, I keep hitting this thing, building down front that we cycled out of, that we were going to try to market towards your low-income folks in town, you know, your elderly that don't have someplace to live.
Yeah.
And we cycled away from that. You know, we lost nine and a half months on the group home. We, our contracts were one year. We've just passed the 12-month part with these three buyers and, I mean, three sellers. And unfortunately, to no one's fault, we were led down the path to believe that we were going to be able to build a group homes, which we were behind. And, you know, unfortunately, it appears that they had a bad experience with something that happened in Schelmsford. We're not really, you know, involved to know enough about it, but somehow they got ahead of us. Because we thought we'd go first and we had the model that worked, you know, with Nancy and with Minuteman Arc and, you know. It's a real disappointment, but it's very difficult to construct a group home to the standards of new construction without getting the benefit of the SHI count. You know, you're looking at $800,000 to $900,000 per house as an investment. It just, the model doesn't work when you have two of those and, you know, eight affordable homes to go along with it. So, you know, it was, we spent a lot of money trying to get that to where it went and we were sure it was going to work. The assurances went away in August.
I want to encourage you to look into the cohousing model because houses have sold very, very well whenever they've come up in the cohousing. And so I know that there's a market around here. So people want community shape.
You guys have a real nice property there and it's run very well and I think that's probably why folks want to buy into that concept, but, you know.
Anyway, but, so those are the things I'm concerned about.
We appreciate that.
I don't, I don't like when, I didn't look really carefully. I also don't, I tend to really like when parking isn't first and foremost. And I didn't study the shape of the houses. I was sort of depending on the Design Review Board, who's, somebody said that they were cute. And so it sounds like they're small and appealing. I just want to encourage you to not make park car king, so, car king.
We know what we don't want to do, that's for sure, you know. So we want it to be as successful as we possibly can.
Okay, thanks.
Janet?
Hi, Mark.
Hi, Janet.
I think this is about the fifth or sixth time I've heard about this project. Yeah, thank you. Thank you for going through this. I know just, you're going through the MFHA, but this feels more like a LIP process. I will say that although I'm a big advocate of affordable housing, I'm also very aware that this is a property that's, you know, pretty much you've picked the only upland part to build on. I had some data in here about the lot, basically that the total site is 12.26 acres, of which wetlands constitutes 5.38, basically non-buildable is 7.39 acres, which leaves about just under five acres to build on, which may be why it's sort of denser construction. I haven't looked at your pro forma, I'm not going to evaluate that, I don't have the ability to. I do have some concerns about the flooding, the stormwater management. I've seen this before with other projects when I was on conservation. There's this issue of cumulative effect, the collective effect of, you know, project after project. And I think that what is happening in the neighborhood now is not entirely attributable to what you're about to do, but obviously people don't want things to get worse. And I do like the suggestion of the ACHC that when it comes to the ZBA level, that they consider hiring somebody, an engineer, to kind of review the stormwater management and drainage plans pretty carefully to make sure that, it's not just for the neighborhood and the existing neighbors, but it's also for the people who would be buying these houses and living in them. I, you know, I'd hate to subject new residents to, you know, just constant flooded basements and that sort of thing. And it is interesting though, I mean, the three existing houses, everybody's talked about trying to keep them in their locations because the setting is historically significant. And I think that moving them to the front is a compromise because probably it's the one way that you could preserve the houses and still do what you want to do. It is interesting though, in looking at the maps, that, you know, the, I was looking at your site plan, that they're situated on the one area of obviously upland, they're at the top of the knoll or whatever, and then everything else is sort of sloping down and including some of the houses. Anyhow, I'm not going to delve into that. It is a concern of mine and I'm hoping that it will be addressed. I am wondering about, some people, some people in their comments mentioned metal siding or aluminum siding, which is not the case. You're doing vinyl siding. I also gather, because I don't really know much about vinyl siding, but I gather that it's a vinyl, it's a solid piece of vinyl because I, it's not like, which makes it different from aluminum siding, which is kind of like an envelope that goes over existing and that's why it makes noise, whereas vinyl siding is basically like a solid piece of, well, it's vinyl.
So in our homes for this specific market, it's a mixture of stone and it's faux stone as opposed to real stone. And there are cedar impressions and then there is D4, which is mimics the cedar siding. So those are true four-inch because you can, there's a myriad of different styles to use. But those are the three elements of our homes that we blend into this kind of a neighborhood. So you get vinyl, it is solid vinyl. It's low and no maintenance, which is what the majority of our buyers want as opposed to staining or painting and, or having Hardy Plank.
Yeah. And Hardy Plank, is that durable or, because I've heard that...
Hardy Plank's really, it's not difficult to work with, but it's a known carcinogen.
Because I've heard that sometimes if it's at a lower level and people throw stuff at it, it can dent or, you know, I, I don't know, it can get damaged. I didn't know if that was an issue. I don't know which one is more durable. I heard you say that it would be more expensive. Cedar is not low maintenance. We have cedar and, yeah, you don't have to paint it, but you do have to periodically clean it. Well, my husband washes the house every year and then we re-stain it periodically. So it's just a different feel and look for people who like it. But, all right, well, one of the comments, I am the liaison to the DRB, by the way, I think that comment that you mentioned earlier about what Boston is doing, that was made by somebody who was, who was at Nancy's ACHC meeting, because I remember the comment and I remember who made it. So, and I thought, well, that's good for, good for Boston, but we're in a different situation. Somebody at DRB, an architect, mentioned the issue of roof lines because you're having, I think, what, eight different models to pick from and I think, or six or whatever. And there was sort of this concern and it is, it's something that only an architect would pick out, but it was sort of the continuity of the roof lines and the talk about maybe having fewer models that sort of blended well together. I know you talked about how the lots are sized for certain models and so if somebody wants a bigger model and wants a lot that's too small, that person is not going to get that lot or is going to have to compromise on the model, which I was glad to hear of because that could be a problem if you had mismatch between houses and lots. Okay, so I don't know if you've thought about that comment because that is something that I kind of liked from the DRB.
Well, as you know, we promised to go back to see the DRB in the next four to five weeks.
When you start focusing on more of the drilling down to, okay.
And we actually get a site approval letter. Yeah, that's when we'll really dig in, but, you know, the neighborhood is going to be our first, which we've promised for 11 months that we will do. And the architect is chomping at the bit to get to them because, you know, there's a lot of interesting architecture in the neighborhood, the existing neighborhood.
Right.
That we would like to try to use some of those interesting architectural features as we blend, yes, I'll step this way, so that we can blend into, you know, the models. When I was in front of the DRB, I think one of the misconceptions was our architecture's done. Architecture's not done at all. I mean, we just needed to put together a site plan that had features on it that showed the flexibility of the different models, whether they be duplexes or, you know, a myriad of singles. And really the market, Janet, will dictate what we build because that's what happens saying, you know, the customer comes in and we do allow them certain flexibility within the specific site, but not total flexibility. They can't have, you know, the 20, 350 square foot unit on a 1350 square foot target because it ruins the massing. But I think that was the massing, you know, we talked about the far side of the property with the DRB. I think it was, the architect and the engineer actually spoke about the concern as you're looking back across the bridge here to these three houses here and then being walkouts. So, you know, to go all the way back to one of your first, because you've been through this five or six times with us, the existing houses have a lot more sprawl than we're going to be allowing because you've got the riverfront that we can't really alter. So there's going to be a significant amount of green space that surrounds the entire buildings. And although there's only 5.7 acres of upland, that's really not seven acres of wetland, it's seven acres that we can't go near because of the riverfront. There's a significant amount, if you look from the dash line up here, that's all existing grasses to that. And that was one of the questions that we asked the staff is, you know, did they want to take some of this property in some type of a conservation restriction or some type of a model for public access, which they didn't show, you know, a lot of interest in. There was a discussion about public garden possibly going and that's one of the reasons we're going to take a look at what the floodplain is in here because the engineer that's doing that OXPO feels that maybe the floodplain isn't quite as significant elevation-wise as was shown on the original topography. So that would give us some space to be able to do things like a public, you know, public access and garden along that area, which is something that we're trying to look at. So we're trying to take all the input from all the boards. When we go back to the DRB, we will have a much better, more significant architectural array. It may not be eight units, it may be six, but remember we're going to have two duplex styles so that we can kind of mix that up. And then we've got the existing three houses, so really, you know, we need to have at least probably four or five models to choose from because we span from 1350 to typically 25, 2600 square feet the max.
So the larger end will be 25, 2600, but maybe there won't be so many of those?
The average is about 1850.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what we average. That seems to be where we really niche in is right around 1850.
And are you still proposing to do four accessible units that are, and half of, two of which would be affordable, right? Because I know that that was...
We did that a lot of our...
Yeah, that was something that you mentioned, maybe two meetings ago? Anyhow, I heard of it. So I think it's probably to compensate for the fact that you're maybe, or were you originally going to do that anyway before, even with the group homes or...
Our group homes were fully accessible, yeah.
So maybe that's, so it's, so I thought that was interesting. All right. I, you know, Katie already asked about the barns, okay, and you're moving, you're moving. It's the yellow house, a yellow, blue, and then the house in the corner that's not in very good shape. That's how I know them. So the yellow house with the barn is the one you're moving the whole?
Correct.
That'll be interesting. You should let everybody know when you're doing it so we can watch, which is...
We'd be happy to.
But let me see if there are any other, any other questions. I mean, a lot of this stuff is, engineering did, I think, have a memo about the sidewalk and also about traffic impact.
We did, we spoke to them about that.
Yeah. Okay. I mean, I gather that some of these things are things that you're going to have to address in greater detail later. And Natural Resources did submit a memo. Obviously, you're, you've already mentioned that you're going to have to go before them about its wetlands delineation and whatnot. You're within riverfront, I guess there may be some interest in this construction in that area. Even though you're, it's a 40B, you're still, you're still bound by the wet, the state law, if not the local wetlands protection bylaw. And I think right now, that's all I have for now, but thank you again for your forbearance.
No, no, we would have done a LIP, as you know, from the beginning. That was not an adversity to us, it's just that at the beginning, we couldn't get DH, I always screw this up, DHCD, to buy into it. And the head of DHCD and their attorney had moved over to MFHA. So that's why we went with MFHA because they were supportive of the group home and we couldn't get DHCD to buy into it. And in the end, DHCD is the one who squashed the group home because they would not allow it to be monitored on a long-term basis.
Right.
So, you know, it kind of went full circle.
Okay, well, thank you.
No, thank you.
Ah, gee, you may have already answered this, but excuse me if I'm asking it again. I may have been spacing out. Did you consider leaving the houses? Have you looked at, re-looked at that issue?
We did. We've looked at it 10 times. You know, the sprawl of the existing house, the yellow house, if we will, we'll go by color, on the left-hand side, takes up a significant amount of the upland. Each of the houses, as Janet has said, sit, as you saw when you were there.
Yeah.
You know, on the highest points of the property and they're spread all over the property. So it just takes away all the value of the property if we consider trying to leave them there up on the knolls.
And what about the third house? Have you decided structurally not capable of moving it?
We're going to, we're going to keep a place for it, as promised. And once we get a little bit further and deeper in, we're going to have a structural engineer look at it to see the feasibility of moving it. We're told, just Mark did the architectural mapping with the architect, it's just in terrible shape. And it's got leaks and it's got, you know, mold and it's got rot and it's just got a lot of things not going in its, in the right direction for it to be stable enough to move.
Okay, so I assume from that, if you can't move it, you'll tear it down?
If we can't move it, we're going to, yeah, we're going to have to raise it.
Okay.
I think that has the least amount of architectural and historical significance of the three.
Are you planning slabs for these or you think you'll have basements with the water table?
You know, this is the area where we abut the neighborhood, where it's the largest concern of water is down in this area here. This area here, they're all walkouts. So this entire area as this side, I don't think there's going to be any water, you know, problems. And it's not going to, you know, attribute to the water problems that already exist down below. So to answer the question, my guess is the ones closest to the neighborhood will likely be candidates for slabs. If they're not slabs, they'll be, you know, four-foot foundations. A lot of people don't like slab fatigue.
Yeah, right.
So we go with four-foot foundations and then go from there.
Okay. The ACHC had a comment about your proposed name, New England Village subdivision? I mean, it sounds like from the Historical Commission that New England Village is the original neighborhood in South Acton. You wouldn't, you don't use the name subdivision in advertising your...
We don't use any names at all right now because we're not advertising.
Okay, well, yeah, but I mean...
So far in advance, we wouldn't even do any marketing. But to answer your question that has, MFHA asked us actually to change the name. They thought it was kind of bland compared to the other projects we've done.
Really?
Yeah, so we're...
I kind of like the name myself. If it's historic to the neighborhood, so...
I liked it from the beginning. Since I met with them, I really liked it, but, you know, maybe I'll just call it, this is...
If it has that historic connection, it seems like it makes some sense to me. But anyway, that's far be it for me to pick the name of the development, so. Did you, do you market these as having an ability to add additions to them? I thought I saw that in your marketing, in your proposal, that, you know, they're 1,800 square feet, but you can always add on to them if you want to.
In our marketing?
Yeah. I thought that was in your proposal. I may be mistaken about that.
You know, SCV made out our, I do the financial part of it, the engineer did the engineering part of it. I'm not trying to throw anybody under the bus, but normally with our approvals, there is very limited ability to, to add on to any of our buildings in any of our 40Bs.
Yeah.
So, you know, you may be able to put a dormer, which we negotiate upfront with you guys, or expand a space over an existing garage, or put on a 12 by 14 sunroom, but that's really usually the extent of, of any additions to the buildings at all. Yeah.
Okay, I don't have any other questions. Okay, Franny?
That just came up. Just, parking, each place has two, is there any guest parking?
There is guest parking down here.
Okay, is there, are the roads wide enough that if somebody's having a big event, that there could be? And also, I just wanted to thank the neighbors, you know, there were several letters from the neighbors, and I just wanted to make sure that you're going to be responding to all those things about the...
I mean, we have a regular discourse usually with the neighborhood, pretty frequently, yeah. No, we've, they've been very supportive from the very beginning, so there's absolutely no reason why we wouldn't continue to take their input. At the next stage, we're going to take more input from them, because we're looking at the architectures. We've heard about the flooding from day one, so, you know, we're attuned to that.
I appreciate you talking to them all along.
I think it'll get better, and it works. But, you know, we're going to be digging a whole bunch of trenches with lots of stone in it for the sewer, and that usually draws a lot of water away from these houses. So...
Okay, no more questions from the board. We're going to give the neighbors and other citizens who are here the opportunity to speak.
No problems.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Shuyi Lee, Skylight Drive, I just have one quick question. Remember, we build affordable housing in town. Do we have set aside that we give priority to town employee if anybody is interested? Thank you.
We have the chair of the ACHC here, who can answer that question for you.
When we've done LIP projects, DHCD will generally accept a local preference with 70% of the units. We haven't dealt with a mass housing project in a long time, so I'm not sure what their policy is. But in the past, that we have certainly tried to encourage town employees and people who work in the town privately to apply for these units. It's just a question of not exceeding 70% of the units, so that it is indeed open and inclusive to anyone.
Okay, so, so what's the process? You run, you've run the lottery in the past?
We, when it comes, yeah, when it's lottery marketing time, we would submit a request to Mass Housing, saying, is it okay if we have 70% of the units? And they'll decide.
Okay. Yeah, okay. Thank you. Any other citizens want to make comments? Yes, Ms. Forbes?
25 Martin Street. I can't see this little plan at the moment, but on the entire north, north boundary of Butter. Do you have, do you have the latest of this plan that we could see a little better? Yeah, I think it was on the website. Whatever is the latest one that was printed like this.
It's on the website.
Oh, on the town website.
It means, what was it, our packet?
Yeah, I just think this little, this little tiny thing here is, is a little difficult to talk to. You're not doing slides, right? You just have your small plans here. You know that the neighborhood is, is concerned about what happens with the three existing houses. To a lot of us, I think that is what makes the difference between something that has even a hope of blending in with the neighborhood, and something that's, like, landed with a huge impact.
I'm sorry, I missed that. You said the trees, is that?
No, the houses. The three existing houses.
Oh, the pre-existing houses?
Three, existing houses. And we're happy to hear about the barn as well. But I'm sure, Mark, I saw a plan that did not have to move the yellow house, the number, the house now at number 31. And, you know...
Please don't.
Or you had one that slid it a little bit, not too far. Where?
Mark, can you use the microphone when you speak?
If you move it, where would you move it now?
Apologize. Sorry.
If you move it, where would you move it now? Can you?
To the front. The yellow house and the barn go on the very, very front.
No, that's, that's white. The one you pointed to is what?
This one.
The one at 31, the one at 31, that's, yeah, yeah, where, about where your finger is, it's yellow.
This one's yellow? I'm colorblind, I'm sorry.
That's yellow. Well, we don't quibble. But that's the one you're having a problem with.
The smallest one.
The one, the northernmost of the three houses that presently belong to the Evanses.
Correct, this is the Evans house.
Yeah.
The Evans house is now scheduled to go right down, all three of them are supposed to go down front now. Originally, we were moving the Evans house from here to here on a previous plan, but then it was thought that it was out of sync with everything else that we're going to construct. So we're moving it now from here down to here, I believe.
So it's for stylistic reasons that you would move it down by the street?
The thought was, and I don't remember who through each of the boards that we've gone to and committees, but there was a concern that it would stick out like a sore thumb if it was left up front here. This is where it was originally scheduled to go, and then, so we put the three of them down here.
So you put it further to the front?
We did put it to the front.
That's not a comment that I've seen anywhere. But I guess what I'm probing here is, we're hearing the intent to save the three houses, but we're hearing kind of a caveat that, well, maybe we can't save one of them. To the neighborhood, it makes a big difference that you actually do what is necessary in order to save that house. So one question is, if you leave it in place, stabilize it, do whatever rehab is necessary, it would seem that that would, that would address your problem of a house that you think maybe can't be moved. So I would just throw that out there. I'm asking you to try, because we're, you know, if it goes through all its approvals, we don't want to hear, as the design gets going, what we have heard in some other situations in town, and that is, oh, well, we can't do this after all. We wanted to do it, but we can't. So I guess one thing the neighbors are asking is that you do, you do do this, even if it means shifting your plans a little bit, possibly leaving it in place, so it, you don't have to subject it to moving. Thanks.
Any other comments from citizens? Yes, sir.
Tim White on Robin Street, 35 R. Robin Street. And I, my first question is, you've, you've talked about talking with the neighbors. Could you define neighbors?
You want me to give you this? Sure. So John Sonner at 76 Maple, so I'm not quite in a butter, but I'm, I'm a stone's throw from it. And Nancy Tavernier had reached out to me when she said it was coming, because she knew I lived close to the area. So we, we, you know, I've got better connections, Maple, Martin, and Stowe neighborhood. We do know some on Overlook and Heron Way, and reached out to some of that neighborhood as well, across the, the Brooks. So if you'd like to be added to that, that conversation we've had, be glad to, to include you, and I've kind of acted as communication liaison.
Sorry, can you speak into the microphone, please?
If you see that funny-looking triangular lot down where he's putting the drainage ditch?
According to what?
Right, right there. That is my property, and the lot beside it is my property, as near as I can tell from looking on my phone on the, on the town website, and seeing, seeing that that's going to be the accumulation point, and knowing full well that that whole, you talk about the drainage, and that this is going to improve the drainage. I have no doubt that it is going to improve the drainage for the houses that are up there, but for the people who are along School Street, and the houses on the other side of the river, I have a hard time calling it a river, but, but it's, it, when, when you've had, haven't had two years of drought, it does carry a fair amount of water. My concern is that you're, you're ditching a lot of space, you're paving a lot of area, you're creating a much more rapid overflow of water, and that, the combination of, of all of that, School Street now, on a heavy rain, in a reasonably, I would, I would call it a normal year, School Street floods, because the water can't get away from there fast enough. There are a lot of houses along School Street that end up with, with water lapping at the front door. So I'm, I'm very concerned about having that much paved area and that many houses that are just dumping water as fast as it comes down out into any area. That is a big concern. And to say that the, the wetlands isn't as extensive, like I said, we're in a two-year drought, so you can walk a lot of places now where you can't normally walk. And I would really hesitate to have anybody do any kind of a walk-around without some, a lot of historical background, recognizing that the wetlands and floodplain is, is pretty wide down there. The flood, if you talk about the floodplain, get elevations for School Street at a foot or two, to the School Street elevation through the woods there, and that's the water level in a lot of storms. So that's, that's one comment that I wanted to make. Is there, again, I haven't had any involvement, but is there sewage, town sewage for that development?
Yes.
And the other, the other thought, and somebody mentioned it earlier, the, if, if I look at that, the, you, you talk about the density being average. I, I really find it hard to believe that that many houses that look like you can spit from one to the other is average housing density. The fact that you can't build in the, in the wetlands or in space beside it is true, but I guess I don't see that as being typical. That looks a lot, a lot denser than the, than the Maple Street housing area, which is one of the, one of the densest longstanding neighborhoods in town. And that looks, if I were, if I were to guess, that's probably twice as dense as the existing Maple Street area. And so to say that that's not going to change the character of that part of town, I think is, is, is wrong. I just, I, I think it's going to change it significantly. And, and I'm, I'm most concerned about the drainage. Our house happens to be higher still, probably about equal to the yellow house, but if they have any kind of basements, I know a lot of people have a lot of problems with, with water in the basement. We happen to be high enough that it's not a big problem for us. But anywhere off of the crest of the hill, I'd be real concerned about it. So yes, please put me on your list.
Can I just ask you, I'm not sure I know where School Street is. You're on Robin Street.
School Street comes out of Jones, Jones Field. I'm, I'm sorry, Stone Street. I said School Street, I meant Stone Street.
Okay, okay.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay. I do know where Stone Street is. Okay. Thank you. Any other comments?
Hi. I just want to clarify the process, because as I said, we normally do LIP projects, and this is the first time we've done a mass housing project in about eight years. So what you have before you now is the opportunity to send comments to Mass Housing, and then they will issue a, a letter of site eligibility, as opposed to when it's a LIP, you actually have to take a vote, sign the application, as do we, and that application is as close to final as it could be at that point. This is just preliminary. And as Mark said, they haven't even done the storm water design and so forth, because that comes after Mass Housing decides this is feasible. The important role that they play is looking at the finances, because they indeed help finance, with the financing of this project. So their job will be to go through the pro forma, to, to really understand whether it is feasible financially, the number of units proposed and so forth. So, you, you know, to make, make sure you understand the selectmen and not the permit granting authority, that the Zoning Board of Appeals is. And, but your role now is the comments role.
Okay, thank you. We do have a memo in our packet from the Land Use Director, Selby. And, and typically, the selectmen will send to Mass Housing a letter summarizing its issues and concerns about the project after gathering all these comments from all the other town boards, including historic resources, natural resources, and density concerns, as well as the comments that have compiled about the project from other boards. So I see our role as commenting to Mass Housing, not just about the topography of the site or the, the water table on the site, but these issues about historic resources and density concerns as well. I mean, we can communicate those. Whether that will make any difference in the final design or not is up to Mass Housing, I guess, at that point, so. Any other questions, comments? Yes, Katie?
So I had just said I'd reserve my comments until we got to the comments period, so I will add those now. As Nancy mentioned, we have to draft our letter with the comments. My recommendation or things I would support seeing is, you know, commenting that we would like to have the peer review of the storm water management plan when it's, when it's put in, to really understand the concerns, you know, understanding the concerns related to flooding. I would like to see something saying, we encourage all efforts possible to save the three homes. You know, as, as Ian mentioned, it sounds like two of them are pretty, you know, are, were pretty confident that, that those can be saved and moved, and there's some question about the third one. And I think it, you know, it, it does make a difference to what, to what it will look like. So I think encouraging that all efforts be made to save those. Again, we don't have any authority, but can put that thought in there. I have, you know, some concerns about the density of this, but understand that when we talk about affordable projects, there is, there is increased density, and I do support increasing our affordable housing in, in town. So, you know, I don't know if we want to put anything in there, in there about that. But my, my main ones that I would like to see comments in, in our letter are related to the, related to the flooding issues and to saving the historic homes. And I do want to thank Mark for, you know, it's, you're not doing the LIP, but you've still been sort of very responsive and, and gone through many, many meetings with people. So we do, we do appreciate, appreciate all your work on that.
Thank you, Katie.
Anyone else have comments about what we should include in our letter to Mass Housing? Okay, Janet, you confident you've got enough?
Yeah, I, yeah, I'll have to, it's been a while since I think I've done one of these. I've usually done a LIP, but, um, yeah, I'll put together something and draft, and I don't know how, how we do this. Do we, did we get an extension of our deadline or?
Well, we got an extension because they canceled the first site visit, and then we went on the second site visit, and it was, I think I'll understand... And it was, I think, our understanding that the comment period was open until 30 days after the site visit. I don't think that was necessarily Mass Housing's understanding. But, and so we had talked about, I think, having this in October at the 17th, which would have been within the 30 days after the visit, I believe. But we decided in talking with Mr. Gallagher and Mass Housing to put it on for this evening. Now, I'm not sure what the heck the deadline is to get this letter to Mass Housing at this point, and maybe we can, do you know?
I think you were on this evening because of the deadline. And I believe their expectation was they would get a letter from you in the next seven to 10 days, so they could respond before the 15th of October. I don't remember the day that we looked at the site block. But I know that they had hoped to get it on earlier than this evening, but I think you had the meeting with Water, and they got pulled on the block this evening.
Could we vote it, could we, if Janet drafted the letter, and then we could review it and vote it, if we have a meeting before special town meeting next week?
Yeah.
Because I think that might, that's on October 5th. We have a special town meeting, so often we meet beforehand. And then, if you have the letter by then, we could kind of okay it.
The site visit was on August 29th, according to Selby's memo, so. Well, October 5th is after that, but why don't we ask, Mark, can you ask Selby to confirm for us what the deadline, absolute deadline, is for sending this letter? But right now, we'll contemplate October 5th. Okay. I think that's...
Thank you very much for your time, Ms. Selby.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a discussion on municipal elections to the Boston Region Metropolitan Planning Organization. There's a package in our packet from, I believe it's the MBTA Advisory Board and MAPC, actually, together, I guess, about this process. Franny, do you want to explain to us what's going on and what we should do here?
Yeah, I've come to the conclusion that I don't feel prepared to suggest that we try to run, act and try to run. Maybe you all will disagree. There are 22 voting members and two non-voting members of the Boston MPO, which is sort of the agency that takes all the, I wanted to say transportation, but it's not just transportation. But it takes federal funding for our area and determines exactly which projects will be done. So it's an important board. One of the members of the board is somebody from the MAPC, the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, which is where the planning, in the same 101-town area, it's the planning arm. The Boston MPO is sort of the giving out, doling out money arm. And a little, few years ago, it was changed so that instead of as many town or at-large members, they started to have a few of the members be from one of the regions of the planners, the planning regions, like we're in the magic planning region. And so one town from the magic planning region has a seat, and that's Bedford. It's been Bedford for like two, one or two terms. So Bedford is running again. And I don't know enough about the politics of these things to say, let's run against Bedford. I do know that, I think Lincoln ran against Bedford a couple of terms ago or last time. There may be reason that we should look at it and consider running when it comes up, when the magic seat comes up again, or an at-large seat. But for this time, I'm not suggesting that we run against Bedford for the magic seat on the board.
Okay, well, my understanding was we were supposed to nominate somebody. I mean, we could nominate Bedford, couldn't we? I mean, is that, isn't that part of the process?
A town has to then be nominated. It says in here that, you know, sort of the town, whether it's a board of selectmen or, it depends on the makeup of the town or the city, the chief elected official can nominate someone, and then the chief elected official may only sign nomination papers for kind of one municipality-proven seat, and you have to get five nominations. I think Bedford usually would, I assume that they would come to us and say they wanted the chief elected official, meaning the Chair of the Board of Selectmen, to sign their nomination papers. If they haven't, then we don't need to take a vote. If we wanted to run Acton and somebody from Acton, then you would have to seek kind of that, get five other towns, four other towns to sign it. I agree with Franny, you know, not knowing enough about the politics of the MPO and the magic seat, that doesn't make sense this time. Maybe we talk about it for the next time it comes up. But I don't think we have to take a vote tonight unless Bedford sort of approaches you as the Chair or somebody else in the board to say, we'd like your nomination.
Yeah, I haven't heard from anybody, so they must be soliciting from other towns or whatever. I don't know. They need five, they need five towns to nominate Bedford, I think.
Bedford's the...
The incumbent.
Has, yes, the incumbent, so probably has a natural advantage. I don't know. You said Lincoln had tried running against the Bedford thing?
Somebody from another town said that they had.
And they lost, or they didn't succeed?
Yeah, I think so. I think they didn't.
So Bedford, I mean, I don't know.
So they probably have. I mean, they've done this before. There are probably four other towns they just go to, and they go to those ones, you know?
I mean, I did hear concern, one person I spoke to thought they wished that the Bedford rep, who is the town manager, would come to more of the MAPC meetings. If they're representing the magic region, you know, they should be coming. So we could talk to them about that and maybe make sure that the same person that's going to the MPO meetings attends the magic meetings.
Yeah, I, I mean, you know, they, the MPO approves several plans, including the Unified Planning Work Program, which programs funds for transportation planning programs in the region, and the Transportation Improvement Program, which programs federal, state, and local funding for surface transportation projects. I mean, it's really a Byzantine system, but having dealt with both rail trails in town, the tip was really important in getting them funded. In one year, they would be, you know, number 368 on the list, and then federal funding would change to support bike paths, and they'd move up to number 20. But, I mean, what happens if Bedford has got a project on the tip that's competing with something Acton wants to do? What does the Bedford guy do? How does he decide how to vote on which has priority for funding? I'd like to know some of these things to kind of get a concept of what, how the process works.
My hope is that they would be looking at the whole region. I do, would love to encourage our town to make sure that somebody goes to the meetings. It really makes a big difference if you're in the room and seeing what's going on.
I mean, Roland goes to the tip meetings.
Roland went a lot during the, and Mike Dowling, when he was...
Rail trail stuff. Roland was there almost constantly, along with other planners from other towns like Maynard and that type of thing.
Right, but it would be, even if we don't have anything right then, it might be nice to make sure if somebody regularly went to the MPO meetings.
So exciting.
No, I mean, I think Roland, and my understanding is he has a pretty good relationship with the MPO, and that's why, part of why, when the sort of federal priorities changed, that our rail trails were bumped way up on the tip from where they were. So, I mean, it's not as though we're not being represented. I think we are, but, yeah, I mean, it would be...
And I think we're probably being represented at least more effectively. I've been to the MPO meetings with Roland and all the planners from the different towns, and they just, they know the routine cold, and they know, you know, you go for lunch, but you don't stay away, you go back. Because sometimes they, you know, as you say, Byzantine process, and sometimes they do something if you're not in the room to show that you're interested in whatever's on the tip list. So I assume that, you know, we could encourage, you know, the planning department to continue to sort of keep their toe into, in whatever's going on there. If, you know, certainly for our town, I mean, I assume other towns should do the same with their, if they have specific projects. You know, magic representation or MAPC representation aside, I assume that individual towns are sending their reps to look out for their interests if they have anything on the tip list, so.
No further discussion on that item. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Number seven is sign a request, the Acton Women's Club Town Common. I'm actually going to hold that for a very quick question. Number eight, one-day alcoholic beverage license for Marsha Anderson at Narrow Park, October 15, 2016. Number nine is a committee appointment, Schuman Adeshu for Acton Boxborough Cultural Council. I hope I pronounced that name correctly. I mean, the only question I have is, the Women's Club is on the Town Common. Does the Town Common extend beyond the green across the street?
It does. It goes, it goes actually quite a bit north.
Okay, past Meeting House Hill and, I guess, which is...
Probably right up to Meeting House Hill.
Okay. Okay. Other than that, any other questions about the consent agenda? Somebody want to move to pass those items?
Since that we approved the consent agenda?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Hearing none, it passes unanimously. And I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
We adjourned. Thank you.